And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday, the ninth of March, 2021. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
President.
Councilmember Noah Kowski. Councilmember Rivera.
Resident.
Councilmember Wingo.
Resident.
Cormus President.
Right from the top.
Item number one, January 2021 cash flow summary.
Items open.
Items open and we have the deputy controller on gonna talk, speak to this.
Yes, good morning. Gentlemen, honorable body. Yes, we did file.
You missed a lady. It's International Women's Delano.
Good afternoon, everyone, especially to miss every female, every male on this call. Good morning to everyone. Hopefully today is a great day. Happy Women's Month International.
Get it right, Delano.
Yes, yes, my apologies. But we did, the Controller's Office did file the January 2021 cash flow report. Like every month, just a couple of bullet points that will like for you guys to end ladies, like everyone to pay attention to is for the sales tax for the month of January, we collected 5.3 million, 5.3 million sales tax, 800,000 higher than what we originally budgeted, but 158,000 less than last year, the last time, last year for January 2020. Also, sales tax, we collected 8.9 million in sales tax, 1.7 million higher than what we originally budgeted, but 800,000 less than what we received in January 2020 at the same time. We didn't, we haven't received any state aid in the month of January, but we are scheduled to receive state aid in the month of March. Also, if you guys, you'll see that the city received 6.9 million from the state in star exemptions. And another item, we want to point out that the city did use 5.7 million of the Board of Education cash to cover the month expenses. And or any other que, any questions in regards to those items, those key cash items?
Councilmembers?
You know, I just, just. You mentioned the sales tax. How much total have we lost in sales tax? You mentioned 150,000 and you mentioned another amount, but over the period of time compared to last year, how much have we lost total in sales tax?
Actually, sales tax is much higher than what we, what we projected from our end and also from what the administration projected. A New York City sales, it's like we definitely have rebounded from last year compared to this year. Meaning what I was saying far as the differences was in sales tax was sales tax prior to COVID. So January 2020, when you look at COVID really, let's say, sales really start being affected and let's say last two or three weeks of March. But sales tax is lower in the month of January 2020. When you look at January 2020 compared to January 2021, sales tax is lower. But what we did was we, our projections was based off COVID. But our projections came, the sales tax came in higher than what we projected for sales tax. So right now we're looking at probably for the year compared to what we budgeted in sales tax, we might be 10 to 15 million higher than what we originally projected for sales tax to come in for the month.
What do we attribute that to? I mean, you know, the increase in sales tax, I'm just curious, I mean.
Well, really, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Let's go to the commissioner, Majority Leader, Commissioner Estrich.
On the sales tax, I, you know, as Deputy Controller said, it really is, when we go from July to February, we're ahead of last year's numbers by over $500,000. And I think what most of it is attributed to is some of the local business, but also the internet sales. I think that has helped tremendously.
Yeah, I totally forgot about the internet sales. Now, I guess internet is collecting sales tax, which is now you have to pay for that, yeah.
Any other questions, colleagues? Commissioner, can you, can you tell us, give us an update on where we are as far as the fines for the red light cameras, school zone cameras?
Um, you know, it's not collecting anything through the month of February and they just started last week. So there's really not much change in the collection right now from we were at a million, 1.5 million.
So, but I remember, I thought the 1.5 million was a number that we got back in like November. And so you're saying that we didn't do very much from that point to where we are now? I mean, I know we had the.
That was a projection at that point. That was a projection at that point in the end of the year. So what actually has been received, I think we talked to you earlier in February, was that 1.5. Now it'll, payments will start coming in because we just opened it up again the first week in March.
Okay. Um, okay, Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Deputy Controller. I was very pleased to see that the city refinanced a lot of our debt so that we were able to save, have a significant savings. When is our next debt payment?
Um, I'll have this probably sometime next year, depending on which bonds are applicable. And that's something that the Controller and her team look at every year. I mean, we're going to go to market for new funding, but then we also to see where savings for the city and doing refunds with lower interest rates. And everyone know the interest rates are low now, so this is the best time if we're allowed or if we have bonds that allow us to refinance, we will jump on that.
But we, we have another debt payment in December, correct? I mean, will our bond comes due in December, correct?
Well, that bond is a revenue deficiency note. That's due 12/31/2021. And that will go towards next year's hopefully budget. But one thing we would like to mention is that if, I mean, there's a lot of conversations in regards to the stimulus and one thing is Controller would like for the administration to do, and I'm a council, is to set aside some of that stimulus money to be able to take care of, to be able to pay off that debt in December, December 31st, 2021.
Deputy Controller or Ms. Estrich, can you tell us what our total indebtedness right now is approximately? Do we have someone knows, know the number or close?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we do have our cash and debt manager on the line. So Greg, I'm not 100% sure if you could provide that data to the council right now. If not, we could have that to you in the next half hour.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I don't know the number right off the top of my head, but I could pull it up, you know, in 15 minutes.
Okay, Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for Donna, Deputy Controller, do the funds that we're going to receive as far as the relief package is concerned, there is, there are stipulations to what we can actually pay back. That the debt that the city has, we just can't pay down our debt because we have this stimulus. We have to pay down debt that is directly related to the pandemic. Is that correct?
Um, we're still receiving guidance on that. You know, it is had us comment about replacing lost revenue. So we have to come, we have to get more definition on what does that mean? You know, they have not fully approved everything the House has to do, the reconciliation. So once we get to that, then we'll get the final guidance on what is eligible and what is not.
Okay, so that would include, I'm not particularly sure, but that may include the, the, the savings that was proposed by the Controller's Office. We may not be able to put any of that money towards savings, but if we do, you know, pay off other issues that were pandemic related, it would have then allow us to have future savings in other areas. Because from what I understand, it has to be pandemic related. Otherwise, we just can't just start throwing that relief, I mean, not that relief, but the stimulus package money in a savings account and just letting it sit there.
No, no, they want the money out the door. They want us to replace our revenues, infrastructure. But the details, like I said, you know, we don't know yet. You know, the mayor is very happy. We got this. You know, that's what he's been talking about for the last year. So it's going to help the city of Buffalo tremendously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question for Mr. Commissioner. Is there any penalty to paying that early?
Um, you can only, since advanced refundings are no longer allowed, you can only do it on the call dates. So it would, that's the only time you could refinance your debt.
And just to piggyback off that, is there any penalty to pay it off in, you know, in one shot instead of payments?
No, if it's callable, if you have funds to pay it off, you could certainly do that. I know last year on the, on the refunding that was done last year with, that had City of Buffalo and Board of Education money, there was a small piece for the Board of Education, you know, one, you know, between one and $2 million and they used funds to, to pay that off and extending it to the, to life, which was a couple more years.
Mr. Samansky, there are people listening that don't know what you're talking about. So explain what call date is.
Call date is, you know, when, when those bonds can be called in and paid off, you know, it's, you know, you're, it, there's usually like, you have a 15-year note, you know, sometimes, usually there's maybe a 10-year call date on those, which means you can, if, if interest rates are lower or you have the funds at that point, you can call those bonds and pay them off.
Thank you for the education. Councilmember Rivera, did you have something?
Yeah, regarding the period of time we have to draw down on the $350 million, is it over? You know, you want the money out the door. I mean, is it over a period of years? I mean, $350 million involves a lot of planning.
The initial information we got is one half will be payable within 60 days of the president signing. At the next 50% would come in 12 months from now.
So.
But once again, we don't have final definite.
After that. And going along with, with Councilmember Ulysses Wingo and Benchen, obviously they're not going to give us money to sit in. And it has perhaps be somewhat related to COVID. But it doesn't prevent us from utilizing our funds, the capital budget. If we're going to use money from the COVID for capital projects and the money we spend borrowing for other projects in our capital budget, perhaps we can look at that as the savings to the city of Buffalo, especially if we're going to spend down $350 million in a year, 60 days plus another year, is an awful lot of money to spend down. So I imagine capital projects would be one of the items in COVID-related expenditures. But if we can use our, our, our budget, our statewide budget and our capital budget for savings to replenish the, you know, the reserve fund, I think that probably be wise. I mean, we're, we want certainly make sure we have some guardrails up there to make sure that, that, that we replenish that fund. We're so reliant on Board of Education for it. So I, and I, you know, I believe that this council will play a role in setting up some guardrails to make sure that we're looking at how money is spent and where the priorities are. You know, we have to, obviously, this is the one time, this is the one time, unless we have another pandemic, God forbid, this is the one time, you know, opportunity we have to kind of correct some things and make some changes in terms of policies and to make sure that we replenish our fund balance. And that's what everybody thinks that, well, that's what most folks want us to do. And they want us to replenish fund balance policy going into the out years. This is deception. The out years, we have to make sure that we don't go back and make mistakes of the past. We have to make sure that we're thinking about paying off our debt because we don't know when we're going to have the next emergency and when we'll need the fund balance to take care of some of the things that may occur and we won't have the money. So this is an opportunity for us, and I don't know if the administration is looking at that as a possibility in terms of some savings. Do you know whether or not the administration is looking at somehow replenishing the fund balance?
Um, we're looking to help, you know, move the money, get it out on the street, help the economy. And then we would be looking at a long term like you're talking about. Let's get our fiscal house in order.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wingo and then Council President Pritchard.
Yeah, just a point of reference real quick, a point of information, I'm sorry. I believe that I read or witnessed somewhere that the 350 million won't be spent in one year. It has to be spent over two years. We have to spend half this year and then half the next year. So we are not required to spend the entire 150, 350 million. I believe it's 125 this year, 125 next year. So, and then again, too, as far as our reserves are concerned, I believe that once we catch up to a net balance where we actually have our debts amenable, then we can begin being more fiscally conservative moving forward from there. But I don't believe any of this money can be used for any type of savings whatsoever. I mean, that's just from what I understand from reading about the, the, the relief, the relief package. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council President Pritchard. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think number one for me is having this discussion. And we are the legislative body and we're still talking about what we're reading and what we think. And we still, as I've said in interviews, we have nothing officially. We, we have not had an official conversation. You're the finance chair, maybe you've had an official conversation that I'm not aware of. I'm the council president. I'm not holding back any information. We are making assumptions right now. At the end of the day, whether savings, and I think a majority of council members want there to be a return to our savings, whether that is realigning money, whether that is, we have a budget about to come up, whether that is looking at the current budget. What my greatest fear is, is that this money comes through and it becomes Christmas in Buffalo and we have no savings after Christmas. And I believe there needs to be, and other council members feel, there needs to be a realignment of our budgets to utilize the money that is coming in for the federal government. And yes, get it to the streets, but at the end of the day, our savings account is at zero. And if we can realign, and I think it's better to have these conversations now so that later it is not, oh, they're coming after us. Oh, that, no, we've been consistent that there has to be a fund balance policy and that if money is coming in, the same way we have been very creative to make sure that money goes into wherever we want it to go. This common council has a responsibility to look at the budget that is about to be presented to us and to ensure, once we know for a fact, how this money can be spent or not spent, that if we have an opportunity to replenish our fund balance and to ensure that we have money for a rainy day or whatever needs to happen, that that occurs. We are receiving more of a percentage than the state as far as their total budget. We are receiving more than the county as far as their total budget. And at the end of the day, I think if we do not find a creative way to be able to replenish and leave for another day, a next generation money, then my personal opinion is that we failed. But all of this is just talk right now because I haven't seen the document. I haven't had a conversation with our federal delegation and maybe others on this call have, maybe Commissioner, the information you all are getting is something that we haven't gotten. And I would hope that as the information is made available, that the legislative body of the city of Buffalo is made, made aware, like in an official way of what the, what the administration is receiving. Because another fear I have is that once the money drops, it's going to be a rush. And everything is going to be, or many things are going to be, we've got to get it out the door. We need a decision this week. That's a fear because there has been no conversation that I know of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council President, you know, we also have to say this is premature because we do not have the guidance. So we cannot say, yes, we're going to do this or no, we're not going to do this.
I agree.
Everything right now is totally premature till we get the final guidance on that.
Yeah. Did you have your hand? Go ahead, Mr. Dow.
Yes, and just to follow up to Council President, Commissioner Estrich, I know the Controller feel heavily in what everyone's saying on this call, but like we said, we have, we don't have real guidance yet, true written guidance and what you can and can't do with this fund. And we have bullets, information saying you can replenish lost revenue due to COVID. You can use some of the money for COVID-related expenses or essential employees. So that stuff we do know, but we don't have it in writing. We also know in regards to, there will be two payments, like I think, I believe what Commissioner Estrich stated. But one of, some of the things that Controller really do feel as far as us being fiscally responsible when this money, this funding do come in. We want to make sure, as we could possibly see, that the 65 million that was budgeted, federal stimulus, we'll receive that plus more. We are, Control also want to make sure that we are able to set aside our budget to pay that revenue deficiency note. That's due, that 25 million, that's due December 31st. We also make sure that all three bodies of government work on a fund balance replenishment plan. We understand that the unassigned fund balance has been at zero for the past three fiscal years. We also understand that the administration have kept people employed during this pandemic. We understand that the common council has questioned a lot of stuff that's been going on that they probably didn't question in the past. So we welcome all of that, but the Controller and her team would like to be involved with the fund balance replenishment plan if allowed, depending on what we can and can't do with the funding.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowman, and then Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Delano and Donna, if we could just see what you have already as far as the stipulations of spending, but also when it comes in, if we could get that information as far as the guidelines on the stimulus money. And then I also support, you know, the, the policy, fund balance policy. And I think we should have guidelines and, and a way to replenish. I think we all understand the fiscal state we're in and, you know, there's money that needs to go out the door. But I also look forward to, you know, being in a position where we have, you know, funds and we're not left vulnerable how we were in this position. You know, when the pandemic hit, we're in pretty bad shape. So I look forward to that. And if you could just get us any information of what you already have, but when it comes in, we'd like to be apprised of that. Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, we don't have any, I mean, speaking from the Controller's Office, we don't have issues sharing anything that we have. We have an article and then also the same things that you guys see in regards with, with in the media. But we can afford, act forward the information over to Malcolm or we'll have Tashana Petty from our office.
I guess the one thing that we need and, and you know, I think Council President kind of alluded to it is better communication because we haven't been kept in the loop. And, um, you know, that's been from the beginning. I'm just going to be straight on this. I'm not trying to sugarcoat nothing. And here we are looking at the cusp of getting something and we don't even know the plan. And I guess that's what we're saying. We want to be involved in the process and the plan because it shouldn't be someone rushing to get information or get some approval from us. Conversation, I think that's critically important. Like you all said, we don't have a check yet. We don't have any details yet because that's what I want to see. I think I went to the Congress's website to see if I can read up on the information. It really didn't give any details. But I do know it's going to be the two payments and the somewhat the amount. So again, we want to move forward in the right way. We want to reset our finances so that, again, if there's something in the future that's an emergency, we are in a better position where we are in that right now. I know we can talk about different things that we didn't do, but I think the first thing that we need to do is make certain that our plan going forward is a plan because a failure to plan is a plan to fail. And so we definitely want to be on the right side this time and not go back to where we were before. Councilmember Rivera, did you have your hand up? Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Yes, we don't know what the federal government is, you know, the restrictions and conditions are with regards to the stimulus. But we do know that we are going to receive the money. We do know that we're entering into a new fiscal year. And we know that we don't have a policy prepared to deal with this. And so I think the, the fund balance policy needs to move forward pretty quickly. So we have, at least on this side, a plan to replenish the fund right now. We don't, we don't know anything, but the common council has a responsibility. And I think setting a policy that kind of restricts us somewhat, puts some teeth into this because we don't know what the restrictions are, but we do know that we need a reserve fund policy. And I think we need to move this fairly quickly. May 4th is just right around the corner, our fiscal, we're going to enter into new fiscal. We're going to be talking about our operating budget once again, and we should have this ready for that. I mean, it's pretty close. We're only months away from receiving stimulus money. We're months away from a new fiscal year and yet we don't have a policy prepared for this eventuality. So I think we need to move on this. I think the council needs to work with our law department to push this policy forward and make it policy or even make it part of the charter, giving us some teeth so we can move forward on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Noah Kowski, I'm going to let Commissioner Estrich speak only because I think she's going to respond to the Majority Leader.
Yeah, well, I do want to say, you know, this opportunity, like you say, is a terrific opportunity and it's going to help the city be stronger, fiscally stronger. You know, we do have the rainy day fund, that's fully funded up there. This is going to help this fiscal year come in very, very positive. You know, going forward, we're going to have to work and come look at what our budget is. It's May 1st, it's not May 4th. It's coming in earlier. And, you know, be very careful how we're spending our money. I, I do agree with that. You know, the money's coming in, it's going to be split over two years. We don't know if it's going to be a two-year spend down or a four-year spend down. Once again, this is very premature. A lot of these discussions, you know, and once the information is out, we will share it with everyone.
Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Wingo brought up a really good point where the stimulus may, you know, might have stipulations where we cannot take that money and put it in savings. But I'm sure that that money can alleviate funding streams in departments so that we can have funds that will be able to, to fund the unassigned balance. And I am really, you know, appreciative of my colleagues, especially the council president that talks about, you know, the future of the city and that this stimulus can really set up, you know, a fiscally sound city. And I always tell the older colleagues in the council that if you're going to leave us younger members holding the bag, make sure it's not an empty one. Because, uh, you know, we are living in turbulent times and, you know, fiscal responsibility and having fiscal savings is another way of an emergency response that we have in other capacities when the city responds to an emergency. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Even though we don't, we may, if we can't use the stimulus money to fund our fund balance, there's other opportunities. There's money that we owe from the casino and from, we owe money from, well, the enterprise fund, it has a surplus. There's ways that we can creatively, as the council president said, fund our fund balance and still use the money to get out in the street. So, you know, this, this is not an issue. I guess the first step is to get the details on what the money, how the money can be used and then we can move forward because right now we're just speculating because we don't, I guess, the, the House hasn't even approved the stimulus at this point. So once we get that information, we can be creative. Miss Commissioner Estrich, I'm certain knows how we can flip things around and move things around where we can fund our fund balance and still be consistent on what the stimulus money is supposed to be used, how it's supposed to be used.
You know, also, as you mentioned about Seneca money, you know, that's coming in, that'll have a lot less restrictions on it coming forward. You know, the mayor's always said, we're going to get this money. We know we're going to get it. It's been part of the state budget. That's going to come forward. The mayor's talked about this federal money. This has come forward. So we're confident that we can move in a positive direction.
And, and also Commissioner, let's not forget about, sorry, sorry.
How come you have the Councilmember Wingo? Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't disagree with a lot of the principles that were mentioned. I don't disagree with the, the sentiment regarding our fund balance and ensuring that we replenish it. But I know that the spirit behind this American Rescue Plan is. But I know that the spirit behind this American Rescue Plan is to ensure that we are spending the, the relief package on costs that are directly associated with the pandemic. We spent all of our money before the pandemic. We were out of funds before the pandemic. And what we need to do at this point, if you ask me specifically, is again, as Council President alluded to, as you, Mr. Chair, alluded to, and as Councilmember Rivera, I basically, everyone in this, in this, on this meeting alluded to, that we have to, that we have to offset what we've spent in the past due to COVID to ensure that we have savings in the future. Once we get ourselves back to a state of stability, then I believe we could spend conservatively for the future to ensure that we have fund balance. So I think we all are saying the same thing. We just, I guess we're not on the same road to get there yet. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Deputy Controller.
I just wanted to add, we also want to keep in mind the first state aim payment, aim payment that we're looking to receive, hopefully sometime this month. Around, I think, 30, 40 million. So, and, and, and just to reiterate, it take everybody on this call. It's just not the administration. I mean, as I stated in the past, the common council also approved and reviewed the budget too. So we all have to take responsibility to prior COVID and after COVID. And I see that's what you guys, everyone is trying to do now, but I think we all need to work together and be unified and not one group going left, other one going right, other one standing in the middle. So that's like a lot of the miscommunication or uninformation that's not being shared at times. So I think it take everyone to make sure the city is fiscally responsible and able to provide services to its citizens.
And on that note, Mr. Dow, Commissioner, what are we owed? Because I know we have the 35 million coming in this month from the state. That's 80%. Is that 80% of what we normally would get? Is that?
For the month of March, I mean, we're, Commissioner, you can speak to that. I know.
Yeah.
The budget is.
You're on mute, Commissioner.
Our cash flow shows the 20% reduction.
Okay.
So that would be 20% less.
Normally.
What the state has said is they were going to give us 15% of the 20%. So that would be an additional 40 million coming in.
Is that, is that for a March that we're looking at the 40 million?
An additional 40 million, yes. At the end of the state's fiscal year.
Okay. So, so there's opportunities. I mean, there's money that we're owed that the state was been holding back that we could use as part of our replenishment of our fund balance. We got the Seneca money, which is more than 11 million that we had on the cash flow. So there's a lot of opportunities to move around money and not necessarily from the stimulus money because of its restrictions that it has to go out. And I'm, I'm wondering how do we spend that type of money when, I mean, it's a, when we talk about the hole that we have in our budget, the 65 million, but we're supposed to be getting supposedly 175. So we covered a hole that's in our budget, then we have to X us over. Do we know what the number is of what we lost during the pandemic? Because we, because I'm keep hearing that we are actually exceeding what we did during the pandemic.
I think one way you could look at that is, last year, we finished year out, like, we had to true onto the fund balance of 3.4 million. So that's like, you know, there we lost 3.4 million at the end of the year. But then what we also want to look at is this year, we've incurred costs this year. If you look at the numbers, if you go on the Controller's website, you can see where actual revenues and actual expenditures that came in. I think based off the number that I ran yesterday, I think we was like expenditures of almost like 30 million higher than revenues. But that's based off where we're at today. But you also have to take into account.
Did, did you say expenditures are 30 million higher than, how, how is that?
If you go into the Controller's website, and you look at the fund balance and you look at your revenue, and then you look at your revenues today, and then you look at your expenditures today, you take that difference as of today. Remember, this is only up until, this was as of March 8th. And we still got almost three, four months left in this fiscal year. And then we also have to remember, it's a timing issue. I know everybody keeps saying the city keep using the Board of Education money, but once again, they receive state aid once a month throughout the year, whereas the city receives state aid three times a month throughout the year. One, some of the things we are saying is that property tax is higher, but we know that's like flat. We know what we're going to see in property tax each year, but sales tax is higher. But we know, as you just stated, far as this additional revenue that the city will receive in regards to Senate, the settlement with Seneca, hopefully this year, is just real promising with the, the deferred aim payment from the state. And then also this additional revenue coming from the federal government. So if all this come in, we'll, we'll be in a good position. I, I know our group, the Controller, I had a good conversation with her yesterday, myself and Greg, where we're excited. I mean, we're happy. All this negative stuff that's been going on and city not receiving money, the city not doing this, not doing that, we're moving forward. But like you guys said, we have to have a, we have to make sure we spend this money the right way, but we had to spend it based on the conditions that the federal government allow us to do.
Any other comments, colleagues, questions? Okay, can we get, can someone give us a report of what the actual, from the pandemic, the period of the pandemic, what our, what our, our expenses are, what our net loss is, if there's a net loss? Can someone give us that report by the next committee meeting, please? I mean, we can submit it. We'll have the Chief of Staff submit it to, I guess, to Commissioner Estrich, to you.
We can do that. Yeah, yes, send, he has some, send the request to me, what he.
Okay. We'll send that to you as well as, Mr. Samansky, is you going to send us what our outstanding debts are for the city? You're, you're on my meeting.
I'm working. I, I'm going to kind of break it out between city, Board of Ad and so forth. So it's, but we know exactly, because some of the numbers that we have in the official statement that were the refunding that we just did, it's not broken out. It's in, it's in total. So I figured it would be more helpful to break it out between the two entities.
Okay. Okay.
I just, you know, I just want to say once again, you know, I think the city is in a wonderful position right now. We're going to transition the city in a lot of different ways and for the mayor's budget and what his vision was. I think it's going to go very, very positively.
Yeah, it was painful getting here, but we, we're here now. And we're still alive.
Got to have a vision and the mayor's had it. So I give him a lot of credit for this.
Okay, well, let's give the council a little something. So thank you.
Give the federal government some credit as well.
Yeah, let's give them a lot of credit. Okay, if nothing else, we, motion table.
Motion table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Council President Prigga.